Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council's special meeting of December 9th, 2021. City Clerk, preamble please.
This meeting is compliant with the Ralph M. Brown Act as amended by California Assembly Bill Number 361, effective September 16th, 2021, providing for a public health emergency exception to the standard teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide a safe environment for the public, staff, and council members while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options. The council may take action on any item listed in the agenda. Public meeting videos. Members of the public may view the City Council meeting by logging into the Zoom webinar listed below. City Council meetings can also be viewed live and/or on demand via the city's YouTube channel, youtube.com/brisbaneca, or on Comcast Channel 27. Archive videos can be replayed on the city's website, to address the council. The City Council meeting will be an exclusively virtual meeting. The City Council agenda materials may be viewed online at brisbaneca.org at least 24 hours prior to a special meeting and at least 72 hours prior to a regular meeting. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit public comments in writing in advance of the meeting. Aside from commenting while in the Zoom webinar, the following email and text sign will also be monitored during the meeting. And the public comments received will be noted for the record during Oral Communications 1 and 2 or during an item. Email ipadia@brisbaneca.org, text 6282192922, join the Zoom webinar with the ID 99193628666, the passcode 123456, and the caller number 16699009128. If you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact the clerk at 415-508-2113. Notification in advance of the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1 is the 813 call to order. Would you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a camera for the community meeting room? Because we cannot see the rest of the council.
All right. That'll work. It's Brisbane. It'll work.
Okay. Is this as good as it gets?
Yeah, well, that's better than what it was before, that's for sure.
Okay, let's go with what we've got. Thanks. Okay, item number 2 is roll call. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Lentz?
Here.
Councilmember Mackin?
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Here.
Mayor Cunningham?
Here. Thank you. A report out from closed session. City Attorney, can we get a report out, please?
Mayor, the council met in closed session to discuss pending, or I'm sorry, anticipated litigation and gave council and staff direction as to how to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3 is adoption of the agenda. Item A, staff has amended, has an amendment to the agenda. Consent calendar, item F, amendment deed and resolution number 2021-78, conveying an easement to PG&E Company for the public utility purposes will be discussed as a new business item. Can I get a first and a second to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye, thank you. Moving on to item 4, Oral Communications, number 1. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? That will include people in the audience this evening and people calling in via Zoom, text, or email messages? Ingrid? Do we have any text messages or anything? We have a raised hand by Michelle Salmon. Go ahead, Michelle.
I try to be a patient person, but keeping the public waiting for almost 45 minutes to 50 minutes before starting the scheduling, a scheduled public meeting just really doesn't work very well. It does not encourage public participation. And I find myself now gritting my teeth in the technical aspects of the Zoom. Should have been worked out in advance. Some, I'm disappointed. I've been sitting here for literally almost an hour. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing no hands, no more raised hands or texts. Roland has raised his hand. Go ahead, Roland.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give you a brief update about what happened at the Caltrain Board meeting on Monday morning. Essentially, they approved some kind of settlement with the attrition contractor, which increases the cost of the project by another $465 million. Now, that's on top of the additional $900 million that they had approved back in 2017. So now, in 10 years, we went up from 1.2 to 2.4 billion dollars. The reason I'm addressing you is that, as you may recall, last year, we put a measure on the ballot, known as the Measure RR. And I believe the citizens of Brisbane, 1/8th of their safe practice are going to that measure. And one of the conditions that were agreed on by the three counties, there was a resolution that Samtrans, the board would be revisiting the Santrans administration of Caltrain. That was as a condition for putting the measure on the ballot. Well, Samtrans has since indicated that, no, they don't have any indication of letting somebody else manage Caltrain. But not only that, on Monday, they actually proposed allocating $150 million worth of Measure RR to make up for their cost over. So I'm gonna wrap up here. I'm personally gonna start blocking all funding for Caltrain until they comply to this resolution, which is known as 2020-42. Because if we don't, the next time we go back to the voters and we ask them to put another safe tax measure on the ballot, we're gonna have some serious problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Roland. Ingrid, anybody else?
I have no further comments. Or raised hands, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Moving on to item 5, the consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve items B through J, removing item G?
So moved.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, you're removing item F?
Yes.
Not G?
Sorry. Removing item F, not G. Can I get a motion again, please? Addison?
Moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye, thank you. Moving on to item 6 is new business. Item K, consider approval of Resolution 2021-79, approving the purchase and sale agreement for the Bank of America site located at 70 Old County Road. It is being recommended to direct the city manager to complete all legal documents needed to purchase the property at 70 Old County Road for a purchase price of $4,250,000. Staff report, please.
Yes, the, as you, as you and everybody in the city knows, the Bank of America closed its operations on the site in early 2021. They, they put the property up for sale. The city offered $4,250,000 for the property. The bank has accepted that offer. What you have before you tonight is a resolution authorizing the city manager and the mayor to sign all necessary documents in order to complete that res, that sale. The, there is enough cash in the city's general fund to pay for it with cash so we can have a quicker close to make sure that, you know, we were very competitive in the process. However, staff recommends that we will come back to you at a later date with a bond to reimburse the general fund for the $4,250,000. At this time, without having the exact interest rates that we were gonna get, staff estimates that the annual cost to repay that will be about $250,000 a year. That is within the capabilities of the general fund to do that. That will be for a 30-year bond. We estimate that we will bring that bond back to you sometime in late February, maybe early March, for you to do that. If we do not reimburse the general fund, we will be below these council allocated general fund policy of about $8 million. We'd probably be, have our fund balance probably closer to $2 to $3 million, which would not really be enough cash to provide us to get through another recession that, like, we just had. So our recommendation will be to reimburse ourselves with a bond. But if, since it is a, at the entrance of our city, there is an important piece of property for the city to control the future of.
Thank you. Counsel question? Colleen?
Yes, thank you. Stuart, could you tell us, is it imperative to move ahead immediately with this cash payment? Or could we wait and secure the bond first?
I, I think the bank would like to have as quick of a close as possible. I think that was one, that could have been one of the deciding factors for us. We don't know. All we know is that the bank is looking forward to having us be able to close it within the next 60 to 90 days. And by the time we sell the bond, if we go to council in March with the bond documents, the close will probably be sometime in April. So it would be past that time period.
Okay, thank you.
Terry O'Madison, questions? Terry, you're muted.
No questions.
Thank you. Okay. Any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, have not received any written correspondence or text messages?
Thank you. No hands raised? Thank you. Okay, council discussion.
I think we should approve it. I think that it, it should be handled out of general funds money. And we can't go through a normal lender like a normal homeowner would do. So I think that coming back with a bond at a later date and tipping into our reserves is the prudent thing to do at the moment.
Thank you, Terry. Any other comments?
No.
No. All right then. Can I get a first and a second to approve Resolution 2021-79, approving the purchase and sale agreement for the Bank of America site located at 70 Old County Road?
So moved.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Cunningham?
Aye. So moving on to item L. Can I get a motion to elect, oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, can we do the, we're moving their urgency item for the easement deed? Item F?
I do not have that on my notes.
This was the item that, I'll just try to give a general explanation of it. This was an item that was on your consent agenda.
Sorry.
Was noticed properly as we do with our agendas. Unfortunately, it, the staff report did not make it into all the packets. So out of an abundance of caution, I think we wanted to remove it from the consent agenda, put it under new business, handle it as an urgency ordinance. The effect of that is that we'll need 4 fifths vote for this item to be approved. With that said, I'll ask the city engineer, fireworks director, to walk you through the content of this item.
Yes, sir, thank you. And counsel, our apologies for your second technological glitch this evening. So the matter before you tonight is PG&E's request to have an easement deed serving Sewage Lift Station Number 4 at Sierra Point. Counsel will recall that as a result of the extensive development that's going on out there, both at the shores and at 3500 Marina Boulevard, those developers were required to upgrade and essentially completely rebuild Sewage Lift Station Number 4, which is just due west of where the Radisson Hotel is. As a result of that, it requires an upgraded and larger Pacific Gas and Electric electrical service there. So PG&E is requesting an easement deed, which is in total just less than 300 square feet. Said deed is centered on the access gates to the lift station. So there's no harm, there's no incidental harm to us at all by allowing that easement. So staff is recommending that you approve the easement deed with Pacific Gas and Electric and also approve Resolution Number 2021-78, conveying an easement to the Pacific Gas and Electric Company for public utility purposes. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Questions? Colleen?
I have one question for staff.
Thank you, Terry.
Is this an exclusive easement or will we still have access through that property?
We still have access. It's non-exclusive now.
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm good.
Addison? Okay, then can I have a motion to approve sanitary?
Do we have public comment?
I guess we need to have public comment on this. Sorry about that.
I have not received any text messages or written correspondence.
Thank you.
With that, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-78 as a emergency resolution. And
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
That's a second from Councilmember Lentz?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye, thank you. So now, moving on to item L, election of the new mayor and mayor pro tem. Can I get a motion to elect a new mayor?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Colleen Mackin to be our new mayor.
And I would be happy to second that nomination.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lentz? Councilmember Lentz?
Oh, I thought you were waiting for Madison. So I didn't hear.
Let's do Madison again.
They said aye.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye, congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, that's fun. Can I get a motion to elect the mayor pro tem?
I'll make a motion. Oh?
Oh, go, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to elect Cliff Lentz as mayor pro tem.
I need a second? I'll second.
I will be happy to, we got a second.
Got a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye, thank you. Okay. Item M, the reason you're all here. Administration of the Oath of Office of the newly elected mayor and mayor pro tem. Former Mayor Clark Conway will administer the oath of office. Thank you.
You know, Colleen, you should do it yourself because it's such an honor to, you know, to be like, I mean, to do the
Thank you.
Can we get the camera onto them, please?
Thank you.
Is that good? Terry?
Yes.
We see the camera, but no, we need the video, the audio.
Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Colleen Mackin.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter?
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Clark.
Hey, Clark.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Cliff Lentz.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter?
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor Protem for it.
Thank you, Clark. I'm told that, as a mayor, I get to say a couple things briefly. I understand from history that if you've been here long enough, you can make long speeches, but not yet. So this will be short. First of all, thank you for, to my esteemed colleagues for giving me the opportunity to serve you as your next mayor. And walking through the foyer leading into these chambers, you know, you can't help but notice the, all the photographs of our former mayors. And looking at all those names and faces, I'm reminded of how they shouldered Brisbane on their backs and in their hearts. Tonight, we start a new chapter facing challenges that are really no less weighty than those of the past. Every day, every discussion, every deliberation, we'll be making history. My hope is that you'll hear the call of duty to be part of shaping that history. And like those gritty Brisbane citizens of the past, you'll respond and you'll participate. Let's approach this formidable task with the goal that future generations will look back and say, job well done. Thank you. And with that, I'll bang the gavel once. We're going to recognize outgoing Mayor Karen Cunningham for her service. We have a mayoral plaque. A very nice plaque with a gavel.
That I never got to use.
Now you get to take one home.
Okay.
Poor Emmett. And a proclamation. Whereas Karen Cunningham, as the mayor of the city of Brisbane, from December 10, 2020 to December 9, 2021, and whereas during very unprecedented times, she led the city with passion and relentless energy. Her thoughtful and innovative leadership style has inspired many to remain strong as we continue to weather this COVID-19 pandemic together. And whereas in her tenure as mayor, she hosted important citywide events, marking important milestones. She presided over the ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the official grand opening of the new Brisbane Library and the Brisbane Dog Park. She also presided over the 60th anniversary of the city of Brisbane, a community celebration to mark the anniversary of the city's incorporation. The city's 35th Annual Festival of Lights, as well as welcomed the Brisbane 101 Civics Academy participants. Whereas she spent many hours working to solve issues and explore new projects for council consideration as part of her work in numerous council subcommittees and county assignments, including the following: Association of Bay Area Governments, League of California Cities, San Mateo County Emergency Services Council, City-County Association of Governments Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance, County Library JPA, Liaison to the Friends of the Brisbane Library, San Mateo County Pre-Hospital EMS Group, Brisbane Emergency Services Council, Fiscal and Administrative Policy Subcommittee, Public Information Technology Subcommittee, Economic Development Subcommittee, Bayland Subcommittee, Planning Issue Subcommittee, Public Art Advisory Committee, Beautification Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Community Garden Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Liaisons to Parks and Recreation Commission, Liaison to Open Space and Ecology Mini Committee, Liaison to Complete Streets Safe Committee. And whereas she remained a strong advocate for the city's residents and businesses on the local, county, state, and national levels, she extended fire safety with a 100-foot perimeter around undeveloped parcels in Brisbane and pushed for a reduction in hazardous vegetation, as well as Samtrans Route 292 continuing its extension into San Francisco, Airbnb regulations and enforcement, small business grants, a San Mateo Credit Union ATM at City Hall, and coming up with the idea to have onsite branch visits with San Mateo County Credit Union representatives. And as a board member of City-County Association of Governments, took a very proactive and strong no position on bills that would erode our self-governance, such as SB 9 and SB 10. And whereas, under her leadership, the city also responded to the national social movement calling for more diversity and inclusion initiatives and celebrations, as well as supporting the community-led Stop Asian Hate Vigil and voting in favor of five new diversity caucuses at CalCities in Sacramento. Now, therefore, be it resolved that after a year of dedicated service as mayor of the city of Brisbane, we thank Mayor Cunningham for her dedication and stable leadership to her community as she reminded all of us to continue to inject joy into our everyday lives as we celebrate our diverse community and the biggest treasure that we have, each other.
Colleen's next up. Exactly. Okay. And now for our next act. Thank you.
Okay. Would you like to say a couple words, Karen?
Oh. Thank you. Thank you. It has been such an honor to do this job under the craziest of circumstances. And I never got to use the gavel because we were doing all of our meetings from home. Couple of times I wanted to, but from there. It is such a pleasure to do this job. I didn't realize when I took it on how much this little town can really make changes in our county. Gone are the days when little old Brisbane really didn't count because now our voices are bigger than they've ever been before. Gone are the days when little old Brisbane really didn't count because now our voices are bigger than they've ever been before and we are making a difference in the county for the benefit of Brisbane. I've said no so many times in this last year. You will not bully us, you will not push us around, and you will not take away our right to self-governance. And that fight will continue with the people who have passed some of the most outrageous laws without knowing the unintended consequences on all of the communities in San Mateo County. So that fight has just begun, and I came out of a CCAG meeting earlier this evening and the, on the legislative committee, and we have taken great pride in knowing that we are going to fight those who want to erode our abilities as a, as small communities. So I thank you. And Colleen, way to go. You got a-
Thank you.
You got a long road to hoe and it's, and it's gonna be hard and just learn, learn the word no. Period. And keep going. I know you're gonna do an amazing job and I'm so proud to be your fellow council member.
I know your phone number. I know where to get help. I know all of your phone numbers.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
I just want to put in a word there too, Karen. My observation, I, I think you've brought so much enthusiasm to what could have been an extremely dull year. And I, that was, that was very, very welcome. So thank you for that. I think everyone witnessed that and couldn't help but feel your enthusiasm.
Well, that, that word joy is my favorite, favorite word in the dictionary, that tiny little word. And we brought joy in the darkest of times. So thanks. And that was everybody. That was all of us.
Okay, moving right along, we have staff reports. City manager, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think we'll try to get, uh, this up on the screen. Is that correct, Ingrid? Yeah. Okay, um... Okay, the first item is, uh, we did reschedule the dog park reopening due to weather considerations earlier this week, uh, to tomorrow at three P M. Um, we've had a couple of good days of, uh, weather, so we should be ready to go, um, tomorrow. And, um, if you haven't been out there, uh, get a chance to get out there, even if you can't get there tomorrow. It looks really nice. Um, I think we're all gonna be very proud of this project. Second item. There will be, um, a distribution event at City Hall on Monday, December twentieth at three, five P M for our holiday program. Uh, we have until Friday, the seventeenth, to, uh, drop off items, toys, uh, unwrapped, uh, to, uh, City Hall, and, uh, that'll be part of a, a program for distribution. The, um, Balanced Brisbane, um, interactive tool is on our, uh, website. Uh, you can get to it at, uh, brisbane.ca.org slash Balanced Brisbane. Looking for, uh, public input, this is just one of the, uh, methods for getting input on our regional housing need assessment, requirements that will be coming up. As you know, we have a fairly high number, um, this, um, around nineteen-hundred-and-six units. Um, so we, uh, do need a lot of community input, uh, as we work our way through a decision towards the end of calendar twenty-twenty-two. And then finally, just a reminder that, uh, we're soliciting, uh, applications for our various boards and commissions, Planning Commission, Parks Direct Commission, Open Space and Ecology Committee, the Complete Streets Safety Committee, and our, uh, uh, brand-new Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accountability Idea Committee. Um, we have, uh, applications open until Friday, January fourteenth at, uh, five P M. And that concludes tonight's report.
Thank you, Clay. We move on to mayor council matters. County-wide assignments, subcommittee reports. Who'd like to give a report first? Cliff, do you have a report?
Karen, you and I had a really great, uh, economic development subcommittee meeting.
Go ahead.
So we-
Councilmembers, your mic on?
There we go. I'm better angry. Yeah, so, um, let's see, so we were looking at, um-
You better say the committee again since your mic was-
Oh, yeah, so, okay, so we had a great, uh, economic, uh, development, uh, subcommittee meeting. You know, it's, it's always great to get, uh, updates from Mitch, Mitch Bull, our, uh, economic development director, just giving us highlights of, of, you know, what's going on in the city out at Sierra Point. You know, we have a couple of projects that, uh, are, um, you know, potential projects that, that, that might come on board. Um, you know, looking at, uh, uh, revenue streams and, in, uh, you know, from our hotels and, you know, sales tax and other, uh, other forms. You know, I, w- one of the things that I really liked about our meeting, uh, the other day was just looking at, you know, how, um, how corporations can, you know, put more of, of, uh, their share into making our communities better. You know, and just kind of looking at that as, you know, at a higher level and, and seeing what potential there might be for, you know, greater partnership. You, and you always talk about the, the public-private, you know, partnership thing. And, um, yeah, we, we should be doing more of that.
We will.
Okay, Karen?
Um, the, um, I kind of just said it all. The, um, I'm on the legislative committee, which is an appointed position of CCAG. Um, so we, we are a, a different body to CCAG. We're the lawmakers or the suggested lawmakers. And that is a very feisty group of people who are pretty like-minded within, um, the county. And you will be hearing a lot more about the opposition to some of the crazy bills that are trying to get pushed down our throat from the legislative committee on CCAG. Keep your eyes out for that because I'm very proud of the people who are on that committee and the hard work that they're doing. And so we were talking about a lot of the pushback this afternoon at our five o'clock meeting. That was it for me.
Thank you. Um, Madison?
I didn't have any subcommittee meetings.
Terry?
Um, I attended the Airport Roundtable, um, Expansion Subcommittee, and we came up with a recommendation that then we, I attended the Airport Roundtable and recommendation was accepted to not expand the membership beyond the county, um, members that are already involved. They also discussed a new metric for measuring noise events that has the ability to link an actual noise event with the actual aircraft. And so that's gonna give us a lot more information to be able to actually hold aircrafts accountable and have the public be able to know which airlines are causing our noise and maybe make decisions with their reservations in their pocketbooks on who's doing the right thing. So we're really looking forward to seeing how that new metric of, of measuring noise is going to help the reports and how, um, that information helps us to change behaviors. So that's about it for me, I believe.
Thank you, Terry. And myself, I simply had, uh, a couple Peninsula Clean Energy Subcommittee meetings. Um, we had a small group of board members who met with State Senator Josh Becker and Assembly Member Kevin Mullen, who actually sent his staff member, and it was really just touching base on legislation and to emphasize the goals of Peninsula Clean Energy and enlist any kind of support they could from a, a legislative standpoint. So that's all I had. Um, we're moving on now to city council meeting schedule. Council meeting of December sixteenth and January sixth, twenty twenty-two are canceled. Next city council meeting of twenty twenty-two scheduled for January twentieth. Uh, city clerk, was there any written communication?
The council received one correspondence from Seppie Richardson regarding water shortage emergency declaration by SFPUC on, um, November twenty-fourth.
Thank you. Onto oral communications, number two. Is there a member of the public wishing to make a public comment?
We have one hand raised. Michelle Salmon?
Michelle, go ahead.
It's sad that we weren't able to do this transition in public. Um, but I do want to give accolades to Karen for a year, her year as mayor and, uh, in a very tough situation, did a really good job of bringing the community together and representing us. Um, and I think one of the most moving moments were some of the, uh, public gatherings we had in the park, um, supporting various issues. So thank you, Karen, for your service and Colleen. I'm very much looking forward to having you as the mayor and, and lead this amazing council that we have right now. I feel like, um, we're in the best position council-wise that we've been in for a very long time. And I feel, I feel really good about each and every one of you and the work that we have to do. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. All right, we've moved up to the bewitching hour of adjournment. The city council special meeting of December nine, twenty twenty-one is now adjourned at eight fifty-seven P M. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations.
Madam Mayor?